Good evening, welcome to the Free Town Board of Selectmen meeting for April second, twenty nineteen. The time is six o'clock and the first order of business will be the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion to make Charlie Sullivan Chair, Mr. Grunwald Chair of the Health Department and I'll go from there.
Okay, and I'll make the motion that you be Chairman Personnel Board. Okay, any discussion?
We need a second.
George, have a second, okay. Alright, hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, then next we'll be moving on to any public discussion. Hearing none, we'll continue on. First item on the Selectmen's Board of Agenda is the discussion and call of the Special Town Meeting for June twenty nineteen. The last time we did this, when we called for the annual town meeting, we neglected to call the Special Town Meeting. And we'll also need a closing date for the-
Nope, that's all set, we just need to announce the meeting of the, of the call and announce the-
Location.
Okay.
Time and location.
Uh, yes, the, on the location. Did you get the read?
Yes.
Okay, you have any input on that? Oh, George, did you get a chance to read?
No, I didn't.
The, the issue is that if we were to hold the town meeting at Aponequay, we'd have to have a day other than the first Monday in June because Lakeville is holding their town meeting at Aponequay on that day. So, my question I guess would be, do we want to consider another evening that we could use Aponequay? Or do we wanna try to u- uh, will we use the auditorium at the Free Town Elementary School? My only issue is the chairs, how long we're gonna be there?
Um, I don't see anything controversial or anything other than just our regular annual budget that should, I mean, it should suffice, it has. Um, the only thing I'd worry about is, um, Aponequay has a lot of graduation events during that season too, so we'd have to really watch out and keep checking, so. So I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we keep our annual town meeting, um, the first Monday in June, um, and our special town meeting the first Monday in June as described in the bylaws and held at, um, Free Town Elementary School. Um, with our special starting at seven and our, um, annual starting at seven thirty. Which is, sounds so late to me.
Wow.
Seven thirty for an annual sounds late, but whatever.
People have to get home.
Yeah.
Alright, do I hear any motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, your motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, alright, um. I will make the announcement, the, uh, town of Free Town and the Free Town Police Association have come to a collective bargaining agreement. Both, uh, sides have agreed to the terms and the contract will go into effect. I believe it already has, if not.
So with that, um, just to make mention that, um, we'll have to put an article on the Special Town Meeting to ensure that we have the funding for, um, the retroactive.
We've already placed a placeholder-
Okay, perfect.
In, uh, on the, uh, uh, in the to-do list program where we schedule everything.
Okay, um, the next item is the amendment to the architectural design contract for the police station with Compass Group Architects. Um, George, I don't know if you got a chance to look and understand that, but what, basically, all that's happened is, um, the total sum hasn't changed at all. It's the same as originally. Uh, what has happened is we've cha- they wanted to change some categories. There was some categories where they had overfunded in the original contract and they needed to move to some other categories that they had underfunded, that type of thing. So the bottom line is the same, it's just basically a paperwork, we're moving numbers around within the budget.
So what happens is the police station subcommittee, um, votes on it and then, um, sends it off to us. So as long as they affirm everything and the project manager looks over everything, then we feel comfortable enough approving it. Then it comes over to the Board of Selectmen where we, um, we also vote on it.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll abstain.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the, uh, the second for discussion and like, uh, I said, it's, it's only, uh, moving the, uh, money around, so. All in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next item of the gen- uh, the agenda is the discussion and act on Clarky's Memorial, Inarod, and Doro, pardon me, event to be held on May twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen and, um, you are here for it. What was your last name again?
Uh, my last name Peterson.
Peterson.
Rafi is my first name.
Mr. Peterson, um, if you wanna explain a little bit to us what you wanna do, but I will tell you off, I have extremely serious reservations, okay? But if you'll give us the Board a, uh, a view and then we'll go from there.
Okay, yeah, it's, uh, this is a, this is an annual event that we've, that the Motorcycle Club, Pilgrim Sands Trail Riders, has been holding for, I don't know, probably thirty-five years or so. That they've been working out of Clarky's Farm there on eighty-one High Street. The, uh, you know, the course utilizes, uh, Free Town State Forest, through special permitting, we apply for a permit, granted the permit every year. We, uh, we have a volunteer work agreement with DCR. The club is a five oh one C seven, I think, you know, it's a nonprofit. So yeah, stewardship agreement with, uh, DCR and, um, so basically, uh, the, the, the event, it's, um, it's a timed event and, uh, basically it's one continuous loop, you don't, you don't, uh, double up on the trail. And, um, so we basically, you know, that's all, uh, registered, you know, street, street registered motorcycles, licensed insured motorcycles, um, they go through a tech inspection. And, um, so yeah, we basically util- utilize that section of Slab Ridge Road and then the, uh, Bell Rock Road, uh, High Street, you know, in between Clarky's Farm and the, the state parking lot, um, to basically link the, link the trails together.
Okay, anything else?
Um, that's, that's basically it, um, you know, I've met with, uh, Chief Abbott about this every single year. I have, uh, the two, two permits that, um, I was granted for last year and the year before. Um, when I met with Chief Abbott earlier this year, he said that this, that there was this application to use the state, uh, town roads. Um, so he said I should probably apply for it. I didn't know it was avail- that that was available prior to this year.
What was available, what was that?
Is that an event?
What, the application?
Yes.
I believe the application form's been in, uh, operation for a number of years.
Okay, see, I was not aware of that, so, I mean, this is an event that we've, we've put on, so I'm just basically, you know, trying to go by the book and do things right, it's all insured. Everyone's, everyone involved is covered.
Alright, um, this is my issue and this is, I'll address the Board on this also, is you're using, um, several miles of town road to race motorcycles across. And, uh, I find a major, uh, problem with liability for the town because, and, in thinking of this, I spoke to a number of, uh, people, um, friendly with and so forth and I threw that out, I threw this out to them and I said, what would hap- what would you do if you were involved, or some loved one was involved, uh, in an accident involving this activity? And they all said, I'd be suing the town and that's the problem that I have, okay? Your motorcycle rider may be insured and they probably gotta be insured for maybe a hundred thousand dollars. They get involved in an accident and, and, uh, someone is injured, that hundred thousand dollars is gonna go out the window, uh, extremely quickly. And I think this is putting the town at a liability it shouldn't be. In the past, if I'm not mistaken, you have run in the state forest. Running in the state forest, that's a state forests issue, okay? But when you're running on town road, that becomes a town or free town issue. And I'd be opposed to you using any town roadway as a, uh, as part of your race.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually, it's, it's not a race.
Well, you say it's not a race.
It's a timed event and it's basically set up with a speed average, so people cannot speed on the roads. You're penalized for being early.
You're timed.
So-
You're timed, sir.
So that's where, that's how, that's how-
And I'd be opposed to-
Make sure that people do not-
I'd be opposed to using town roads. If you, if you, uh, come up with a different plan where you're not using town roads, I'd, I'd consider it, but I'd be, uh, seriously opposed you, uh, carrying on, on town roads. I'll leave that to the rest of the Board.
I have a couple questions, how long have you been doing this, how many years?
Jeez, I'd say, I'd say they've been running this event for thirty-five to forty years.
Same course, same-
They've alw- they've, they've often used Chase Road here, they've used Memorial, um, when you go into Cedar Swamp Road, um, always, uh, Slab Ridge, uh, Bullock, Quanapog, always, always Bell Rock, always Copacoot, you know, go heading, say, like, I guess north on Copacoot, you know, towards the railroad tracks, you know, then obviously Copacoot that goes into the, the state forest.
Okay, how, how many miles do you use on our roads specifically?
Yeah, the, the map, yeah, it's, um, I would guess it's probably four, five, six miles. Yeah, it's, um-
And you said eighty to a hundred people?
It's possible.
Alright, um, you're, you've spoken to who so far, police chief, fire chief, um?
Yeah, Chief Abbott, he basically asked me to come here, he said he was gonna be here and speak on my behalf and tell you guys that I was a, you know, super upstanding guy and that he's never had an issue with me.
Everybody that comes in front of us is super upstanding.
Definitely not coming here, I definitely wasn't coming here planning that, uh, my event was gonna be shut down.
I'm, I'm not ready to make a decision on this, so I need more information, so-
Yeah.
I, I can't, um, I can't say one way or the other what I'm gonna do. I just needed some, some variables here, um.
On this map, it shows orange.
Yeah, that's, that's the portion we would use.
That's the portion you would use, okay.
Yeah, you're basically becoming, taking a right out of Hathaway Road and the course, it's specifically designed so you're taking a right onto the road and exiting on the right, so you're not stopping or crossing lanes.
Okay.
You know, that's kinda like the cardinal rule of motorcycle riding, never take a left on a, on a, uh, never stop and take a left if you, if you can't make that left, you're supposed to-
Is this about two miles of road or three miles, do you know?
It, it, I, I forget the mileage in my head, what it is, but it's, um, it's basically, yeah, it's four or five miles maybe from, from Hathaway to Quanapog.
So what is the plan to shut the road down for you guys to?
No, no, it's, uh, it's, the, the way it works is it's four riders per minute. They go in one-minute intervals, it's not like it's a big wave start. So, basically, once they come through, they, they come through, you know, in, they trickle through and I'd have the police detail at the corner of Hathaway and Slab Ridge, just like last year, and there's, there's a, what we call a reset before they get to the tar, that's in a lapse of time. So if they're late, they're back on time before they get to the tar. So they're, they're gonna be going slow, they're not, they won't be, they won't be in a rush. You know, it's designed to keep everything in order.
Have there been any mishaps in the past?
Um, I mean, not, definitely not on the, on the paved roads. I mean, there's, it, you know, the nature of, you know, we're trail riding is, you know, you can fall down. So, yeah, I mean, there's, there have been-
Yeah, I'm not talking about tr- the trails, I'm talking specifically-
Yeah, there's been no, no issues with, um, you know, moving violations, that kind of thing. And it's also, you know, in, in the rulebook where if you get cited during the event, you're disqualified. There's all sorts of like, you know, things built into the whole event, you know, the rules. So, there's no incentive for people to not, not, you know, obey and respect. You know, that's, everyone, you know, people come from aways, you know, to come to these events. This is, uh, this is like one of eight events that take place throughout New England. And, you know, Free Town's kinda like a famous place for trail riding.
Right.
And, um, you know, so people know their guests in the town and everyone's, you know, everyone, and these are people that, you know, they show up at six-thirty, all their equipment is perfect, you know, they're all, everything, they're all, they're all real enthusiasts, you know?
How many riders?
Um, it's, I think last year we had seventy-five, seventy-six, but I put eighty to a hundred. You know, if it's super good weather, you might get a good turnout, if it's bad, if it's, you know, not a great day or it's, you know, been really wet, um, you know, that can affect the turnout, make it, you know, less fun. That's, uh-
Pilgrim Sands has no insurance here, do they?
What is?
Pilgrim Sands has no insurance.
What do you mean?
Well, you don't give us any documentation of any insurance at all.
Well, I, there is an insurance certificate there for the weekend.
I think it's the next page, John.
I mean- We have like, I think it's three million dollar numbers here today.
Um, well, my, my problem is-
I can show you my previous term.
Alright, but we're talking about now, maybe we're talking about rectifying a mistake that's been, uh, maybe even perpetuated in the past. Um, and, you know, even if you have three million dollars, the fact of the matter is, the town of the, town of Free Town is the, uh, golden pot of gold. Pardon me, it is, it's part of gold compared to Pilgrim Sands or any motorcycle rider. And them carrying on in, your, your estimation of the distance, I would estimate far more like it's ten miles of town road. When you add on the High Street factors, from the, well, Bell Rock Road to, uh, Payne Road is over a mile there. Um, Slab Ridge Road is gonna be about five miles, Bullock is gonna be another five miles, Quanapog's gonna be another two miles, so. And, um, you know, like I said, what you may, what you may, okay, okay, sir, excuse me, but you spoke, now I'm gonna speak. And my thing is, is if you ri- what you do in the state forest is the state forest's business. And, um, my experience has been that, uh, you know, you've basically ran in the state forest or on private property and you did Chase Road. And so I say, I'm opposed to it. If you, if you wanna make your course within the state forest, then that's, that's their call. But that's my feeling, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to, um, just talk to the police chief and get his input, if you don't mind. So I'm gonna hold off on my decision and I'm not gonna tell you one way or the other whether I'm for or against, but I just feel like I need to get some input from him. I'll also check out with our insurance carrier to, to make sure that, um, you know, that we're covered should something happen, um, so I definitely wanna check out on that. Um, we have lots of other bike races in town, um, and, and pedestrian races in town that, um-
Right, I know you guys do like the-
Right, so-
Heart of Graham or-
So I, I would ask that we put this, um, that we hold this over to our next meeting so we can, I, I at least wanna find out more information.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the chief.
Okay.
Alright, that'll be it and we'll be back in touch with you after the sixteen.
Two, two weeks, so two weeks from, well, two weeks from yesterday.
No, it's tonight.
Right?
Tonight.
Tonight.
Oh, okay, we have another holiday, sorry.
Okay, so, um-
The twenty, about-
April sixteenth.
Sixteen.
I'll be notified, okay.
Yep, thank you so much.
Can I ask your question?
Not me, you'll have to go through the chair.
Mr. Chandler, can I ask a gentleman a question?
Yes.
To the event.
Yeah.
Are all the participants in this event licensed drivers?
Yes.
Do they all own registered motor vehicles?
Yes.
That are registered and insured with liability insurance?
Yep.
So, if it's a permit, maybe if you wanna look into, if it's a permitted event, if it's a sanctioned event or permitted, that their automotive insurance would carry over to them in addition to-
Right, well, that, I, I was aware of that, but the, but the, the normal carrying, especially on a dirt bike, is not gonna be any more than a hundred thousand dollars mark.
Well, they're, they're-
The average, the average person is gonna have, right?
They're, they're, they're street registered, so they're, they're not-
Well, these are all street registered bikes, they're not, because in the past, I think, they've been on-
They have, you know, headlights, taillights.
Right, they're street legal, but they're not registered.
Well, they are, they're dual sport motorcycles, they're registered, just like a regular.
Because in the past, I, I recall seeing this event-
They're dual sport motorcycles.
Vehicles going by and I didn't see plates on all of them and they have been, they were obscured or not. But for the most part, they ride by at a reasonable pace. You know, a lot of them are a lot slower than traffic normally travels down Chase Road, they probably because-
But my, my view, and we'll end it at that, is it only takes one, okay, then we're in, we're in big trouble.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, moving on, uh, discussion and act on Tuesday Club of Assonant Street request for use of the bandstand area for the Strawberry Festival, June sixteenth.
Uh, make a motion to approve for this Tuesday's Club, um, or be, or request for the village bandstand for Strawberry Festival.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next would be the discussion and approval of Second Amendment to Memorandum of Agreement with Mass Development as submitted by the town administrator, David Demash.
Uh, this is a, um-
Thank you.
Thank you.
The project that the town, uh, is involved in with the Free Town Screw Company, uh, and mass E P, mass, um, development funding, a project to remediate the area as well as abolish the, or demolish the building that was on site. Uh, part of the agreement had called for us to, uh, sell the property and to, we had proposed at the time, senior housing and a commercial, uh, application. Uh, what they're doing in this agreement is, uh, allowing us, uh, an additional period of time to accomplish the tasks that hadn't been done up to this point, which includes acquiring, uh, the parcel in Akushnet, uh, holding, um, some informational seminars, uh, having the land transferred to the housing authority, um, having a developer and putting together an RFP to allow, uh, the town to, uh, uh, secure a developer to, uh, build, uh, an X amount of units, we're not sure at this point how many, um, of senior housing units as well as, uh, approximately, uh, three thousand square feet of commercial space on the property. So this is basically an extension of an original agreement, uh, which extends it to January fifteenth, two thousand, twenty twenty-one.
Any questions?
Yeah, this sounds like a large project.
It was a large project when we did the remediation and, and all of the, uh, when we demolished, uh, the original Free Town Screw building, uh, we just didn't do the rest of the project, which is marketing the property to get the money back that was given to us, which was four hundred sixty thousand dollars for mass development, uh, by selling the property to a developer and actually providing senior housing and commercial, uh, uh, development on the, on the parcel.
From my point of view, I, I would rather put this off till I get more information on it and discuss it with you and read the particulars, uh, I mean-
If you can do, the, the thing is, is that we've been working on it for like about five or six months at this point. Um, I, I don't even know if the board really needed to sign off on it per se as much as, um, you know, it's just an extension of an existing agreement. I wanted just to have a record of it and that's why I put it on the agenda with the permission of the chair. It's real, it's up to you, if you wanna hold off two weeks, that's fine, you can do that.
I mean, I, I-
I can give you the file, I can tell you.
Yeah, just so, I mean, I can't vote on something I totally don't understand, you know?
Okay, is that the board's prerogative?
Uh, I'll let you know, it's, uh, is there any, um, oh-
At this point, it, no, at this point, no, I, I can call and just explain that we're, you know, 'cause I, I think they expected it back a little bit sooner, but it's-
Okay, well, then-
We, alright, so there's gonna be a lot of things that are gonna come up that, that, you know, we've all been working on for a long time and you're gonna have to come up to speed on it and I totally get that. This is something that's been since before Jack, basically, and it's just, um, and, and before, yeah. So, um, it's just an extension to twenty twenty-one, but we don't have any projects per se going on. We're not doing anything, it's just that we have certain criteria that we have to meet by the state in order to get some of our funding back and I don't want that, I don't want us to pull that up.
Repay it, basically.
Right, otherwise we're gonna have to pay and we don't wanna pay.
Was there deadlines on this?
Yes, yeah.
Well, the deadline, well, the deadline has already passed.
Right.
We asked for an extension.
And this is just so we can get the extension, so we don't have to pay back any money right now.
So, but what exactly are we voting on tonight then, I guess?
You're voting to endorse the amendment to the original agreement, extending the original agreement to January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one in order to fulfill our, our obligations that we stated when we got the original grant for the four hundred sixty thousand dollars for the remediation of the land, for the demolition of the land, as well as to acquire parcel in Akushnet to make it a viable project and to get a developer to buy the land and build senior housing and commercial space. That's what the, the plan is.
So we just need the extension.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't sign the extension, then we're in default and we will at some point still be calling, basically calling us to say, alright, we let, we gave you the four hundred sixty thousand dollars with the understanding that you're gonna sell the land and repay us.
So what are we exactly extending, just so I have it real clear?
Okay.
The original agreement was that they were gonna give us four hundred sixty thousand dollars to do an environmental cleanup and to demolish the existing building with the understanding that we were gonna sell the property to develop senior housing and the commercial, commercial development.
Okay, and, and that's what we're extending?
That's what we're extending, we gotta do the other pieces of the project and that's why they've given us an extension to do that.
If we don't, then we'll owe the four sixty, which we don't wanna do right now.
Actually, one of the first steps we've gotta do is, uh, both towns, Akushnet and, uh, Free Town, uh, through town meeting have voted to, uh, transfer the land, uh, to the housing authority and, uh, it requires a legislative, a vote by the legislature to, for us to acquire land in the town of Akushnet.
Alright, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, approve the, uh, Second Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement just so we can get the extension, so we do not have to pay back the money at this time.
You guys second that, sure. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the next is, uh, discussion of Chapter ninety-eight projects, uh, with Highway Surveyor Charles Macklemann. So, Jack, will you come down?
Uh, what we got proposed is to chip seal High Street, Copacoot Road and French Street. High Street would come in at sixty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty cents. Copacoot Road would be sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and French Street is thirty-six thousand, seven, seven, two, one.
Okay, um, anyone have any questions?
No.
Um, only questions, any plans for fixing the hill on High Street?
We had Jim Neusch and G P I out there and, uh, I hate to say that it's, uh- We're putting our heads, cause we don't know honestly what to do. The ledge that's on the hill, we've talked about putting in, sound like a drain going down that side of the road, other than where do we put the water? To cross the gas line, you have to go below the gas line, so where does that put you elevation wise? And you, as you know Charlie better than anybody, the bottom of that slope, you've got the gas line and you got the road. Um, we, 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 between Jim, myself, years ago, um. Kenny Martin from Field Engineering, I, and you know, we've, we've been out there, uh, I thought originally that, that hollow. Right after the first house after, where Michael Kai used to live in that hollow, I thought that would be a nice spot, but unfortunately, that person's septic system is right in the front yard. So we don't wanna have to compromise that. The homeowner that's building the house, that's most of the water's coming from, has offered, um, to come up with some kind of solution, basically. Dig a trench, fill it with stone, and hopefully keep it at bay and keep it off the road, Jeff, uh, Chandler's been working with him. And, uh, yeah, but it's not as easy as just putting in drains, cause we have no place to put the water. But, like I said, these projects, um, again, High Street, Copacoot Road, and Friend Street. We're still working off of last year's money.
Okay.
Um, the three projects total come up to like a hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred and three dollars. Still leaves us about thirty thousand dollars left over from the last couple of years' money, and then this year's appropriation is just old, just a tick over four hundred thousand, so. With the rest of the money, we're planning on doing some paving.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the chapter ninety funds for sixty-two one sixty for Copacoot, thirty-six seven seventy-two twenty for Friend Street, and sixty-two four seventy-one sixty for High Street. Which includes shim and chip seal, um, and police details.
Second, please second, uh, on the, um, motion, I'm going to abstain as to it, uh, for High Street, okay. Um, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just gonna make that.
I'll take those up tomorrow, thank you.
All right, thanks, you too.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Um, next item is to approve the minutes for March eighteenth and March twenty-sixth. On, then, for the selectmen's meetings, for those two periods.
Just wanna make sure I didn't have any changes.
I saw that.
I'll make a motion to approve both March twenty-sixth and March eighteen.
Since George wasn't here, I'll make this second on that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, um, invoice and vote on these, there are.
Not there, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, and, next is town administrator's report.
Uh, I only have two items, uh, one is, a couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity, uh, to tour, uh, the construction site for the Americana facility. Uh, Tim Keo had invited me up and I did a walkthrough, and, yeah, it's a pretty impressive, uh, uh, building in terms of what they're trying to do, and. He wanted me to extend to the board an invitation to similarly take a, a ride up and take a look at what they're building and. How they're constructing the building and the processes they're gonna use and for, uh, the operations of the facility. Uh, second is that, uh, Georgia and I had an opportunity to go out to Old Colony Vocational School, uh, we were able to tour the school. A couple of issues have arisen, uh, which, uh, I have a memorandum from the superintendent, um. From the Volk School that I'm gonna share with the board, I haven't done it because I was waiting for George to officially be on the board. Uh, but, uh, those are things that will be addressed in upcoming meetings, and I'm gonna pass with time on the agenda to, uh, to talk about them.
All right, moving on, personnel board, then, so I'll turn it over to the chair of the personnel board.
Um, okay, just, are you gonna set that Americana, um, tour up, or do you have to see it?
Yeah, if you want back in.
Yeah, so can you set that up?
All right.
What days are good? I know you've got a busy schedule.
I don't have my calendar with me, so I'll just pick a date and I can see if I have anything.
Okay. All right, so the first thing on the, um, personnel side is review and discuss appointments of board selectman members. And, um, as you see in the packet, um, selectmen Sullivan, E M A, Public Safety, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Priority Development Committee, Bristol Aggie Advisory Board. Um, Regional School Finance Committee, and Soil Board. Uh, um, selectmen Pacico, uh, Community Real Task Force Delegate, E M A, Public Safety, Health Insurance Advisory. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Sexual Harassment Officer, Soil Board, um, and Tax Relief Committee, incoming selectman, that would be you. Um, you have E M A, Public Safety, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Soil Board, um, and. Is that it? Soil Board?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 okay, um, but there are two vacancies, um, one would be the Regional School Negotiating Committee, and then the other one would be the. Serta, Southeastern Regional Transit Authority.
Yeah, we.
So the negotiations would be contract negotiations, um, you would be a member of the, of, I don't know how they do it, so I'm not.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're into. I, I think this would be their second year going in, uh, next fiscal year, because I think they're in the contract, they're into, they had their contract. Uh, negotiated last year.
I don't know.
No, but, bring me up to speed, what were the, what were we really saying?
So, the Regional School Negotiating Committee is a member from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Um, represents the town when going into negotiations with the Regional School District.
Okay.
Um, so that's that.
Are, are you looking at something different than I am, that's?
It's in here, do you have that?
Oh. I, I don't know.
It should, it should be in.
You should have it in your packet.
Thirty-nine, page thirty-nine at the meeting, George.
Page thirty-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Wow. Okay.
Right.
So those are the two open things right now, and Serta is Southeastern Regional Transit Authority. So that would be like the busing between New Bedford and Fall River, and, you know, um, trying to get busing here and things like that. So those two things are open right now. You can think about it and let us know at the next meeting if you want.
That would be good.
Okay, all right, so right now, um, I'll entertain a motion to, um, implement those positions, um. As written.
Yes, I'll, I'll make that motion as, uh, written on the sheet.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So as the new chair of the board, he, the chair of the board has certain, um, things that they take care of, and that would be. The Priority Development Committee, um, Public Records Clerk, and the Task Force Bylaw. So, um.
I'll make a motion, uh, to appoint me.
Yeah, there you go.
As such.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, and then, um, appointing, we already did that, and the next thing would be appointment, um, to the following. So the tax tip board, tax increment financing board is the chair of each of these committees. That would be, um, Sheila Scududo for assessors, Kevin Dismaris for planning board, the new, um, chair. Charlie Jessica Thomas Treasurer, and David Demash is the town administrator, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, I, I'll entertain a motion to approve Jeffrey Chandler as a conditional building commissioner. Jeffrey has passed all of his, um, tests, and he's, he's been really awesome, so. Um, anyway, since that, um, we just have to, uh, appoint him as conditional building commissioner.
Just clearing up some, uh.
Yeah, some housekeeping stuff.
It's a housekeeping issue.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, will appoint Jeffrey Chandler, conditional building commissioner, effective July one.
No, April first.
Pardon me, eight, July, yeah, April first, and expires, uh, April third.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, also, I have a change of status for Ethan Bullock for qualified fighter, effective April first, twenty nineteen. He's gone from qualified fighter fourteen ninety to qualified fighter E M T. This is a young man that's grown up in, um, in the town and has done, uh, very well under the, under, yes, so, uh.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a reappointment for Robert Kleveka. Um, to the Veterans Agent Director and Veterans Grave Officer, effective May first, twenty nineteen.
I'll make that motion.
No, it's just, it's a reappointment, he's here, you just have, every year have to reappoint him, so. I'm on page, but I'm on my agenda.
Oh.
So, but if you keep going.
Page forty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's Robert right there. Okay? Did we vote on that? I can't remember. Okay, thank you, um, lastly, uh, have a letter of resignation. Um, I hate to give my letter of resignation, but unfortunately, I was offered another position, thirty-six to forty hours a week, and it is three minutes from my house, I was offered a full-time position on the C O A. Um, I would be very, if I was offered a full-time position, I'd be very happy to stay, I'm currently waiting on a start date and will continue my position until I receive that date, thank you for this opportunity. And if a full-time position becomes available, please keep this in mind, sincerely, Erin Cane. I'll entertain a motion to, um, accept her letter of resignation and sign a change of status form.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, just on a change of status form, please, sorry, I don't know why we're doing.
I agree with you.
Okay, so, let's try to solve that, okay?
So, I can look at it, yeah, all right.
All right, just moving on to the last items of business, new business dates for upcoming, uh, Board of Selectmen's meetings. Uh, Tuesday, April nineteenth, and Monday, Monday, May sixth.
April sixteen.
Yeah, did I say?
Nineteenth, don't scare me like that, you got me all fifteen's though.
Oh, nineteen, oh, nineteen, okay, that's my birthday, okay. Uh, all right, uh, pardon me, uh, April sixteenth, May sixth, and May twentieth.
Okay.
And I'll also put out, if, if there's any business that, uh, has arisen in the last forty-eight hours, uh.
May sixth, May sixth, I won't be here, just so you know.
Okay.
Anyone have anything that's come up in the last forty-eight hours as well?
No, but, you know what, we're gonna, um, be going over budgets and things in the next couple of weeks, um, but I would, I would really like it. We, we tend to get cranky and punchy, um, after a certain time, so I'd really like to try to. Unless we all agree to stay late, I like to like try to get out of here at a certain time, so we're not being crazy and making some.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Crass decisions.
Uh, on that vein, uh. I would kinda propose that we, uh, have a meeting outside of our normal schedule, uh, evening that, uh. We all could agree on and work on the budgets at that time.
Yeah, that makes, that's fine with me.
Okay, all right, anyone have any particular evening that we might look at?
Mm-mm.
No?
No, I'm good.
All right, we'll get back.
Just gotta let me know.
Yeah, we'll get back. All right, um, with no other business, I'll, um.
Well, welcome aboard.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you ready?
No.
I didn't, I wasn't ready either, but we're fine.
Any statement you'd like to make when you're being appointed as selectman?
Oh, I'm gonna say.
I just wanna thank the voters. And, uh, I will do my best to keep Free Town a great place it is now.
I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
No, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.